Hi. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting of the June 22nd, 2021 Special School Board Meeting of the Rutland School. I'd like to call it a order the June 22nd Special Meeting of the Rutland City School Commissioners. Can we please stand and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I would just like to note that Commissioner Ms. Cavakis and Mr. Cavakis are not in attendance tonight due to some personal reasons, and we would like to just wish them well, please. And then I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
A moment. Second.
Motion follow through.
We can't hear you back here.
Okay. Thank you. So I'd like to welcome everybody tonight, and we are here to have a public forum to address the issue that has been on the community's mind. And so tonight, I would like to just open up with the guidelines that we put out and just highlight a few things. Real quick, we've got, what, 20 speakers? All right. So we have about 20 speakers, so I think we'll end up allotting about an hour for the meeting, based on two minutes a speaker, you know, that'll give us a little bit of wiggle room. So that's how we'll begin to set it up. And then I'll recognize each speaker and call them up to the front table, please, and they will have two minutes to speak. Please address the board. And we do want, you know, everybody to just be very observant tonight. I would hope the board members can take notes for future reference, and I really want it to be a listening activity and be open-minded about everything we hear, because I think we're here for a reason. We're all here because we care about education, and we care about knowledge, and we care about each other. And so I'd like to start the meeting with that in mind and really keep, you know, the process of education and how we're educating and what we show our kids through our actions and how they learn from that. I don't know that I need to go through anything else. We can certainly start the meeting. Does anyone have anything before we do?
Just remind, reminder when people come up, so they...
Oh, Rob's gonna do the timing.
But so they just state where their...
Yes. Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you.
People do not have to give their street address, though.
No, no.
No, that's fine.
Just the town of...
Kathy, what did you have?
Um, I think we all received two letters or two emails requesting that their emails be read aloud, so I brought them if you want to read them.
Okay. So what I guess we can do, because we'll have some extra time, I was going to just have that be, because they were addressed to the whole board, have that be for our reference, because that's really what this forum is about. So we could potentially take a vote, or you, if you'd like to read those letters at the end, I'd be happy if you wanted to do that.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. So, okay. Rob is our timekeeper. He'll give a little wave or a little notice of the two minutes at, what, 10 seconds or so?
Yeah. I'll give a 10-second warning and like, hey, 10 seconds, and then I'll say, "Two minutes."
Yeah. All right. So Rick Riordan is the first one on my list, if you can come up to the table. And again, please just state the city of residence.
I'm Rick Riordan. I am a Rutland City resident. So I want to say, first off, I'm very disappointed with some of the board members and the efforts and the initiatives that you're working towards with the mascot issue. The mascot, removing the mascot, does not necessarily change any past generation's history. That history is secure. What this removal of the mascot will do is it will change the history of the next generation. They are respectfully saying to you, "We honor and respect your history with Rutland City Schools, but we would like to have a say in our own history as well." There was a recent editorial in The Herald that had a four-word heading that I think kind of accurately describes where we're at right now. That heading was "We Know Better Now." I work in the field of special education, focused primarily on inclusive supports, and there's been a lot of changes in special education over the years with language and with actions that have had to occur basically because of the way things change over time. Terms like "imbecile" and "moron" and "retard," et cetera, we changed all that. Sometimes federal laws were required to change all that. 2010 federal law literally doesn't allow the word "mental retardation" to be used anymore in public settings. And so what I, I guess what I'd like to say is that the terms that we're sort of focusing on, where the community seems to be having most difficulty with, are terms that, back in the day, were not used pejoratively. They were absolutely not used pejoratively. But we are at a point now where we're sort of realizing that a change has to be made for the better of the new generation, and I would implore you to step away from this issue and get on to the work of the district.
Thank you, Rick. Again, city and state of residence.
Charles Juliuson Stevenson, Rutland City. I would like to first recognize the work of those involved in changing the Rutland High School mascot. I'm truly grateful for their efforts, and I wish I could have done more. But that being said, the change is but one difficult step in the process of reckoning with historical genocide and ongoing cultural disenfranchisement. It is for this reason that I would like to recommend that the school board, that they start their meetings with a land acknowledgement. The purpose of a land acknowledgement is not, as some say, to make certain people feel bad. Rather, they're meant to be instructive not only in the historical circumstances of indigenous peoples, but also their continued work to preserve their own culture while contributing to Vermont's. An example of a land acknowledgement follows. I would like to acknowledge that I am standing and speaking in the unceded territory of the Abenaki people, who, in their own words, have occupied this land since time immemorial. It would be a serious mistake to ignore this history insofar as the subject we're discussing tonight was in large part shaped by European efforts to seize this land. For example, after King Philip's War in 1677, New England passed fugitive slave laws to punish anyone who helped newly enslaved Native Americans trying to escape. And during the American Revolution, newspapers were filled with stories about Native Americans seeking to help the British in exchange for recognition of treaties. There's nothing objective about pretending that none of this history happened, and I encourage everyone to become more educated about history in general and about the history and modern life pathways of the Abenaki in particular. Furthermore, I encourage everyone to support Abenaki-led initiatives, such as the movement for food sovereignty, an effort that seeks to ensure the well-being of the community as a whole, a lesson which we would all do well to learn from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call the name again?
Okay. Is Heather Juliuson Stevenson here?
She's not here.
Okay. So Jake Pluta, then?
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Jake. Welcome.
I'm Jacob, and I live in Killington, Vermont. And I was a Raider, and if I choose to have children and raise them through the school district, I hope that they're Ravens. And just in summary, I've read a lot, and I've heard from a lot of people, and I just think that the best thing to do is to move on and continue with the name that was chosen. It just feels like the right thing to do to me. This whole situation reminds me a lot of Take Back Vermont, where after progress was made, people wanted to go back and look forward. We have a country where same-sex marriage is recognized across the entire United States. So I don't have much more to say, but I know this has been really hard for the community, and I just hope that we can find some peace and move on. So thank you.
Thank you, Jake. No? Eric Solza?
Hello, board. I too want to thank everybody for coming today to explain, once again, something that's been really beaten down. I think, I don't think we have to keep explaining that this imagery does hurt people and that it's thoughtless, and as the gentleman before had indicated, we do know better. And I think the children of the school were charged with coming up with a name, and they did a great job. And basically, what we're doing now is spending a lot of time trying to come up with, it seems like, a way to undo something that does not need to be. And I think the board would be really in danger of opening up a whole can of worms if we could go back on any decisions that were made in the past. So for that, I just wanted to let everyone know that there's one more person who feels like the work that the students have done, the administration recognizing it, and the school board that passed this decision before it should stand. That's it.
Thank you. Lori Arner? Lori Arner? Jean Walker? Giovanni Falco? Hello, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. The process of choosing a new mascot for the RCPS School District has taken a lot of time, energy, and attention from not just the board, but the faculty and staff and students in the Rutland City Public Schools. I'm speaking on behalf of the students when I say it is time for us to move forward. We are tired of watching what are supposed to be our role models argue and complain about what should be an easy decision. It is time to retire the Raider name. The former mascot is just not the way we want to be viewed anymore. As school leaders, it is our job to create a space where all students feel welcome and appreciated. Mascots like the Raiders negatively affect the development and academic potentials of my peers, and that is just a fact. The American Psychological Association recommends that all Native American mascots be retired, and the former president, Ronald Levant, even said, "The use of American Indian mascots as symbols in schools and university athletic programs is particularly troubling because schools are places of learning. These mascots are teaching stereotypical, misleading, and too often insulting images of American Indians. These negative lessons are not just affecting American Indian students, they are sending the wrong message to all students," end quote. They called for this in 2005, and we are still talking about this today. The RCPS School District Equity Committee that was formed by the school board has developed equity statements for our students and adults, and I personally had a hand in creating them. The adult definition states, "Increasing the possibility of access for all, interrupting systemic practices that negatively impact students based on who they are, and providing equal access to all, and cultivating every student." So I end with this: Does moving back to the Raider name mascot fall in line with this statement? I do not think so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Giovanni. And please just state the city you live in, please.
Uh, Rutland City. Dear members of the school board, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sophia Perone, and I'm going into eighth grade at the Rutland Middle School, and I would like to share my feelings on the mascot debate here in our community. I believe that changing the mascot would be beneficial to the community as a whole. It shows that we take everyone's opinions and feelings into consideration. There's no harm in change while it can be confusing. We need to progress as a whole, not just as a community, or a town, or a state, or a country, but as a world. This issue may be small, but it makes a big impact in the end. If nothing ever changed, we'd still have slavery, and women wouldn't have the right to vote. Change can be good if change is done with consideration. Change takes time and courage. We should all be able to agree that slavery is bad and no longer acceptable. However, we all know that it once was. The Raiders', the Raiders' name was also once, the Raiders' name was also once acceptable, but now people have realized and come out and said that it shouldn't be. It might seem weird and overly progressive at first, but eventually, things like this could be unacceptable and horrid in the future. We should be able to, we should and want, we should be able to and want to take the first step in that new direction that could become the better, that could become the better direction for all of us in the end. We cannot get rid of any offensive history, but rather, we can address and fix the issue and then move on to having conversations and lessons about the cultures these things may affect. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, there.
Hi, welcome.
My name is Shelley Spooner. I live in Rutland City. My son attends Rutland Schools. I am a Native Vermonder. Growing up as a child, I spent a great deal of time in the summer on Lake Champlain fishing, camping, and boating with my father. Waiting to catch a fish could get quite boring at times, especially for two young girls who would rather be home painting our nails or picking flowers. My father, sensing our boredom, would send my sister and I beachcombing the shores of Lake Champlain. Beachcombing? For what? He explained many years ago this land was held primarily by the Native Americans before the white men took over the land. There's a great deal of rich Indian history on this lake and Vermont. If you dig a little under the sand, you will find jewelry and tools made by them. You will find stone beads that carved out to make necklaces and arrowheads. What are arrowheads? How will I know? I found one. He said there will be a sharp point on one end. It will look just like the end of an arrow. They used arrowheads for many, many things. The arrowhead could be used by itself for skinning animals to eat, then use their fur to stay warm during the winter, or on the end of a stick to cut tall grass to set up camp or a weapon to defend themselves. Looking back, I was extremely lucky to have a father who took the time to teach me how to fish and explain the history and heritage of Vermont to me. He loved Vermont with all his being, so much so, he gave Vermont a blank check by joining the military, a blank check of total sacrifice for this country. He contracted ALS at 47 and passed at 48 years of age. ALS is now considered service-connected. He did give the ultimate sacrifice. In the end, he was sold out by our government, who refused to pay for door case replaced, replacement, which would allow his hospital bed to fit through so he could be on the porch to enjoy the sunshine. I see a lot of sellouts occurring today. African-Americans removing their very own famous icon, Aunt Jemima, known for making iconic breakfast pancakes and syrup, now demanding reparations. Native American clubs... I have my two minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, 10 seconds.
Native American clubs fighting tooth and nail to have anything that may remotely resemble them in a positive manner are removed. NFL school teams, while ignoring the voices of local Native Americans. I'd like to finish, please. Demanding reparations now. Schools removing MLK teachings as a primary living standard for children to uphold to, to be replaced with racist equity programs. Native American Raider name and arrowhead signify strength, resilience, pride, Native life, and a rich Vermont heritage story that must remain. Had Rutland School City, Rutland City Public Schools taught this history, we would not be here today. Instead, the history taught to my...
You have two minutes, ma'am.
...then-fourth grader was Beethoven abused his significant other by his music teacher. Fast forward a couple of years, CNN plagued on the smart board in the sixth-grade class in lieu of current events. I have just a few seconds.
Is there a full page left, Shelley?
This curricula is unacceptable on every level. This is total indoctrination of our children and must stop now. If the board...
We need leadership here.
If the board is successful in keeping the Ravens' name, what will the future conversations look like?
She can come back afterward.
Excuse me.
All right. I need everybody to be quiet. Allison, I appreciate your comment. Sir, I appreciate your comment. I said, "Let her go." At this point, let her finish her page and just...
I have a half a page.
Please be respectful of my decision. Thank you.
Thank you. If the school board is successful in keeping the Raiders', Ravens' name, what will future conversations sound like? The Raiders won. Who are the Ravens? They were formerly the Raiders. Their name had to be changed because it was racist. They were racist. This is extremely degrading and untrue for all who attended, taught, or coached. True critical thinkers are very aware this is nothing short of identity politics, which does not belong in our schools. The ones participating in cancel culture are either total sellouts to identity politics, lack courage to stand up for what is right, or are ashamed of being racist at some point in their life. Rutland City Public Schools need to stop the sellout of our children, their education, and Vermont's heritage. Voters have already spoken. They do not want the school board to sell out our children to identity politics by canceling Vermont's rich historic names and culture. Reinstate Raiders. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. All right, next. Nick Abatell, please. I hope yours isn't longer than two minutes.
I'm hoping it's not either. It shouldn't.
Thank you. Please state where you're from.
My name's Nick Abatell. I'm a Rutland City resident. I'm an alumni. I'm a veteran. I'm a father. I wanted to address the board this evening and voice my support for reinstating the Rutland Raider, as well as some of my concerns. I'd like to speak about the positives of the Rutland Raider, of the Rutland Raider name. The Rutland Raiders transcend generations, ethnicities, economic differences, and economic differences within our community. The Raider name has overwhelming support in Rutland across the political spectrums. With all the changes to the school system in the last decade, the Raiders are the common bond not only between parents and their children, but in our community as well. In a time when our nation is so divided on such a multitude of levels, the vote to change the Raider name breaks the bond of our community, robs us of our shared identity, and forces us into conflict with our neighbors. The community voiced their displeasure with the decision in the recent school board election, but even that wasn't enough. I wanted to raise some questions to the school, that the school board, I wanted to raise some questions that the school board should be asking themselves when making any decision going forward or at any other point. How will this affect our children? How much is this going to cost? And is it responsible to taxpayers, with taxpayer funds? What will the long-term effects be for our community? And now a rhetorical question. Does the school board represent the members of our community, or do they buckle to the whims of a nonprofit and organization and their own political biases? Remember who you represent. Thank you.
Sarah Allen, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Allen. I am a Rutland City resident. I'm rather surprised and disappointed that we are still here and that this is a topic that is still being discussed in our city. We've been shown that the history of the mascot, the previous mascot, including caricatures of Native Americans and pejorative terminology used in publications, was a negative depiction of Native Americans. It was not used to celebrate their history. And I'm thrilled with the new mascot that has been chosen by students and supported by students, and I hope that we can move forward and set this issue behind us. I was just thrilled to hear from Mr. Falco and Sophia about their support for this. I'm thrilled that students took the time in an evening to come out in their summer and share their support. I think that there are many more and many far better ways to recognize the presence of Native Americans in Vermont and to celebrate their presence and to educate our children about their history than having a mascot as a Raider. I think the Ravens is a wonderful, positive step forward, and I am just wanting to be here to encourage that the decision that was made previously continue to stand, and thank you for taking the time to hear from us.
Thank you, Sarah. Sherilyn Anderson, maybe? Thank you. Is that last name Anderson?
Okay, perfect. Hello. My name is Sherilyn Anderson. I'm from Nicaragua. I moved here 11 years ago, and we love the state of Vermont. It welcomes us with its arms open, right? So my question to you guys is, did anybody ask my son that played with the middle school if he wanted the name to be changed? Okay? I teach my boys that we're Indians, Central American Indians, and we should love ourselves. I get emotional. We should love ourselves, who we are, represent ourselves. We were marginalized, we were killed, we were raped, and guess what? My grandparents taught us to love ourselves, to learn their language, read their books, think like them. So when they come back, we know exactly what they're coming for. This is crazy. We should be teaching our children how to read, how to write, how to think like others. Let them play balls, as we would say in Spanish. Let them play pelota. This means nothing. This is just a name. It has to represent our country, our state. This is so silly. How much is it going to cost you guys to change the name? A million? Two million? Do you know what you could do with that money? Feed the kids that has no food to eat. Put up a place where they could get a bag of cereal to take home. Me personally, as a mother, I have to send an extra backpack, extra lunch bag for a child at school. You could ask her teacher. I participate, I send food all the time, because the kids don't have snack. We should be taking this money and putting it into this, not changing the name. For God's sake, how many victories we have had with this name? It's not going to change who we are and our history. We have to learn from our history, respect it, and respect each other people. I could tell you about this, because you know what? I was born under the revolution, so I could tell you what this is going to cost to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherilyn. Sherilyn, sorry.
Thank you. I'm Butch Paul from Rutland. Back in March, the city of Rutland, the voters of the city of Rutland were very clear with the way they voted, that they wanted to change the culture of this board. They wanted to bring some sanity back to the process, and they wanted to replace the woke philosophy that's permeated this board for the last couple of years. They also voted because they wanted to get the Raider name back. They wanted to replace, they wanted to rescind the decision made last year, or earlier this year, to replace the Raider name with Ravens. The word Raider, the word red, the icon, the arrowhead icon, is not racist. Generations have honored this, this name and this icon with pride and with dignity. And future generations, given the opportunity, will do the same. But all we've heard since the election, since the city spoke, are excuses. Why things can't be done so quickly. We have to talk to our lawyer. We need another conference. We need a consensus. We need another meeting like this so people can give their views. But the big one, the one that bothered me the most, was that someone told me that, you know, I'm not getting a lot of emails from people who support the Raiders. I get a lot of emails from people who really would like to keep the Ravens' name. And I will remind you that nobody speaks louder than voters. Nobody has more control over what happens in the city than voters. They spoke loudly. The difference is, they expect you to keep your promises. They expect you to do what's right. They expect you to do your job. Do your job, and do it now.
Thank you. Okay. Shelley, you already came up. Mark Brown?
Hello.
Hi.
Administration?
Administration. Yeah, I'm a lifelong resident of Rutland. I worked for the school system. I'm going on sixty-two years. And I've been with the program since I was six years old. Because I lived right across from Keith Jim. So I was over at Flight Field. I know where Flight Field is. But I know Mr. Teta personally, Mr. Lemey, Mr. Bunzy Keith. And these people were here thirty-five, forty years. And educators, and they, they're trying to make responsible adults to go on their way after school and lead them, you know? And when they, they're representing Rutland City, Rutland County. When they go out of town, they, he, the coaches wanted to wear a shirt and tie, be respectful, and they're, you know? So I've been, I've been following for years. And I go everywhere. You'll see me at games at Proctor West Rutland, I mean. But there's a winning culture. And it bothers me. I'm truly upset about it. And, and we're divided, this community. And I, and my father was a graduate of MSJ, played sports there. And I've got a grandfather that was a police officer in the city in the fifties. I got another uncle that was a police officer. And I had another uncle that was a fireman. And so I work for the school system. And I've been following this for years. I, I know everybody that's anybody. And I'm just upset. You need to build a winning culture. I mean, I don't know what goes on. I don't know who's in charge of the band. They used to have a band playing the fight song. I don't even hear that anymore. I mean, they had pep rallies on Friday nights. And who changed the color to, color to black? It used to be red and white. I, you know, there's an Indian, but I don't know, arrowhead, I don't care, you know, you can change that, but just the Raider. But there used to be a, there used to be a paper, red and white. But I just want to ask you one more question. Do you know what this is? Does anybody know where that is from? Anybody on this board?
Williams College?
No.
Rutland Junior High School.
This was Rutland Junior High Falcons. They tried to change the color in seventy-nine, eighty because at school, we had armbands and we, it was purple and gold, and we're monitors and everything. And they tried to change this color to be the Rutland Falcons, ninth-grade football. And it didn't last long, maybe a year. Because you're going from nine, you know, up, and you're Raider red and white. But it didn't work. It lasts a year.
But that wasn't, just to clarify what you're saying, that was part of the school's-
Yep, they tried to change it.
From the Raiders?
Rutland Falcons, ninth grade over at the school.
Before.
That was, there used to be one, kindergarten through six, and like this school, I can't, I want to school here.
I just want to make sure I understand correctly.
Seventh, eighth, ninth, and I was at, intermediate was a high school.
Appreciate.
Nine through twelve. But this was the ninth-grade football in seventy-nine, eighty. They tried to change it. It didn't work. Just thought I'd-
Thank you. I like show and tell. It was good. Appreciate your time.
But I just, I just, I just, I'm-
Thank you.
We're trying to build a winning culture, and now you're divided the city. It's-
That's a good note to end the meeting.
Just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
And yes, Kathy, you had the two letters that you wanted to read. Yep, if you want to read from there, that's fine, or you can go up. You have one as well? Did it come to the board, the whole board already? Those letters?
One came to me personally, and three came to the board, I believe. They specifically asked to be read out loud at the meeting. The ones that I have.
That directed to you only, or to the whole board?
Three of them were directed to the whole board that I have right here. One was directed to me.
Okay. So I'm gonna reference the one that was directed to you to just be forwarded to the whole board. So we can read that, because I was going to not have any of them read aloud tonight. Uh, but because the ones that were directed to the whole board, you can have an opportunity to read them. But not, not the one that did not, the board did not receive already.
But they requested- She requested it to be read at the meeting because she couldn't get to them.
Okay. Kathy, go ahead with your two. Um, please state the person's name and, uh, location, and then Ann can follow up.
Okay, so, um, the first letter is from Aaron Epps. And he's from Rutland City. Uh, he says, hello, members of the Rutland City Board of Commissioners. I live in Rutland City, but I'm currently visiting family out of state, and I'm not able to attend the in-person special meeting of the board. If time allows, I would greatly appreciate it if a member of the board could read my prepared remarks below. I've timed how long it takes to read aloud, and it is under the allotted two minutes. Regardless of whether this is shared publicly, I appreciate you taking the time to read this message. And he goes on to give his phone number. Uh, my name is Aaron Epps. I live in Rutland City. I would like to reiterate the comments that I shared with the board during the initial discussion last fall. Before moving to Rutland, I lived and taught on the Rosebud Reservation in South Dakota. A hundred percent of my students were Native American, most of them Lakota. I recall one particular lesson in which I had planned a debate about Native American-themed mascots and assigned a reading that I believed fairly presented both sides. However, when it came time for my students to discuss the topic, they were appalled that I had encouraged them to entertain the idea that Native American mascots were a way of honoring their culture. They even despised those like the Florida State Seminoles, where the university supports the Seminole Nation financially. They unanimously viewed the mascots as a way for white people to mock their way of life and dehumanize them. This experience reiterated just how much I had to grow in terms of my understanding and empathy for the people, for people of different backgrounds. As a straight, white, cisgender, able-bodied male, I experience the world very differently than they do. It is an extreme rarity when I am in a situation in which I feel uncomfortable or disadvantaged because of the way I look or how I was born. Because of that, it is all too easy to accept, or even fight for, the status quo so that I can continue to move through life with the privilege that I have always had. But who benefits from that, and who continues to be marginalized or harmed by the status quo? Reinstating the Raider name is an example of reverting back to the status quo. On behalf of my former students, I ask the board and community to unite around the Raven name and take the next step forward on building Rutland's reputation as a community that embraces progress, diversity, and change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. And the next?
Uh, the next one is, um, from Madison Aiken, and I think she lives in West Rutland. She works at Northwest.
I'm sure we can get it.
She's a teacher at Northwest. So in her cover note, which I didn't print out, she asked that it be read. Uh, so she writes, I'm unable to attend the board meeting in person, but I'm concerned enough to write an email regarding a few pressing issues in our community. First, when we build our community to include our members most marginalized by dominant culture, we all benefit. This pandemic has very few bright sides, but one is that we all have experienced a new level of access with virtual meetings. Since we now know exactly how to make attendance available to everyone, not having hybrid participation becomes a matter of planned inequity. I'm hopeful future meetings will allow for all community members who care about issues related to our schools to have access via a virtual link. Second, I wrote two emails to the board about seeking information regarding an anti-CRT meeting that was advertised as an opportunity for Commissioner O'Connor to speak. I was wondering about her resources, opinion, and content as she was prepared to present. After my second email, Commissioner Brittany Kavakis erroneously informed me Tricia was not going to speak. As I walked into the anti-CRT event with my daughter-
Kathy, I have to stop you there, because you're the only, that's the only one that has dressed board members personally, and that really goes against the regulations. So I'm gonna have to stop you on that one, okay? I would have stopped her the same. Thank you. Um, and I do appreciate Madison's input and continued, you know, communication. I do. I've, I've read many of her things and appreciate it, but I don't think that that's appropriate for this forum. And again, it's the only one that's addressed anybody personally, so we're gonna leave things as is. Ann, um, can you please read the two names that you're the, yeah, you have two more, right?
Correct. Thank you for, um-
Just the names, please, first.
Nan Dubin.
Nan.
Shanti McKenna.
Dubin.
Shanti McKenna.
And Shanti. And which one was the one, I don't know that I received either to date, you know, when I looked last, but which was the one that was only emailed to you?
I think it was only to me, unless it was blind copied. Nan Dubin.
Can you please forward that to the whole board when you get a chance after the meeting? Thank you. Um, and again, I'm going to, um, have no refrain from any personal names or mentions in those. If there are any, I'm gonna ask you to stop. But I'm gonna leave it up to you, and you can start when you're ready.
Great, thank you. This is the first letter from Nan Dubin. She says, my name is Nan Dubin, and I live in East Wallingford. While some will dismiss this message because I don't live in Rutland, this is not just a Rutland issue. It's a human issue. For far too long, it has been easy, as white people in the majority, for us to dismiss the struggles, the hardships, the very humanity of non-white citizens. But that blind eye needs to open up to the reality that minorities suffer when we ignore them, when we do not acknowledge their suffering. If even one person is hurt by a mascot that uses their ethnicity, their color, their heritage, then it is time to recognize that hurt and make a change. The Raven logo hurts no one, is an attractive design, and is not tied to any group in any negative way. Please let go of a past that hurts others. Thank you. And I will keep out any names, if there are any names in this one.
Just where is Shanti from, please?
Shanti... She sent an email to the floor.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
She lives in Clarendon.
Perfect.
Um, she, good. Uh, she prefaces and says, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, but I wanted to express my thoughts. Please read the following and attach letter at the meeting. Dear Rutland School Board members, I am writing to you in support of changing the Rutland High School mascot. As an alumna of RHS, I value and adore my memories of the school and the team mascot. I was a member of the board and many school teams and groups, of the band, excuse me, and many school teams and groups. Changing the name and image of the mascot is not going to affect my fond memories and pride for the school I attended. Moving forward with a new name will not change my memories and will not hurt our community. The team mascot change is an issue of human decency and cultural appreciation. The image of a red Raider, or even Raiders, with a red color scheme is considered hurtful and disrespectful to Indigenous people. Why embrace and promote an image that causes distress to anyone? Aren't we taught to be kind to others and to be respectful of others' feelings? I'm speaking. Throughout history, teams have changed their names to be respectful of others, and it has not affected the love of the team or the history and legacy of the school. Syracuse University's mascot used to be the Saltine Warrior, and they changed to the Orange Men in nineteen-seventy-eight due to racial insensitivity. That is over forty years ago. Shouldn't we also move forward and embrace an image that is more sensitive? Thank you for allowing me to voice my thoughts and for considering all sides of this issue. Sincerely, Shanti McKenna, formerly Gallo. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. And yes, we did get the email. Appreciate that. Okay, so I'm just gonna make some closing statements. And, um, I, I will say, Mark, I really liked your winning, hold on, I wrote it down, the winning culture, spirit. And I really do want to leave this meeting with that in mind, in the sense of our students, in the sense of our community. And, you know, how we, we all win here, and, and there's no right or wrong in this, but I want us to make sure we're really keeping the students at the forehand. So as I mentioned, keep your hat on for education and how we learn. And everything we heard tonight, I hope, um, you know, you took notes. I appreciate all of your time very much. To address why we had this, you know, we really wanted to hear from people. And, um, whether it took too long or not, we did want to hear. And we're back in person, so hopefully we can make some faster progress in one direction or the other. Um, I do appreciate your time. And thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second?
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.